It is four o'clock and the Carroll City Council is in workshop session. Regarding public comments, the public may address city council regarding an item on this agenda. Comments must be relevant to the agenda item. This is not intended to be a question and answer session prior to speaking. So each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and submit it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted before the meeting is called to order. Speaker is limited to four minutes. We begin with an information discussion session. Would you read two in, two A?
Mr. Mayor, would we like to ask if anyone has public comments?
Yeah.
There are no public comments, sir. Community Improvement Project Quarterly Report.
Good afternoon. Just to highlight, I think you may have a copy of the quarterly report for those projects. I want to highlight a few of the big topics and open up for questions. We've contracted the first part of this with base repair. That pre-con's being established hopefully this week or next. They'll come in, do the patching, then we'll move to the crack seal. And then, I believe, the end of this month, we're going to, on the 27th, we're going to open or award the story seal. That works more in the September, October timeframe, but it's all subsequent to, so base repair, crack seal, story seal.
Are you just going down? Are we going down?
Not in any particular order. I'm not going to go through all of these.
Okay.
So I want to give you time to discuss more of the second item.
Okay.
I'm just going to hit a few and then if you have questions.
Will you tell me what number when you get there, just so I can?
So right now, I'm just kind of talking the one through three, the maintenance.
Okay.
And so just kind of reiterate that, I mean, we, that's the third party, not anything that our streets department does. That's separate from the Melon over there that they do. The base repair is going to be done within the next month, two months, crack seal comes in right after them, story, and that's September, October timeframe. And then we wrap up this year's maintenance and then we'll redo it again next year. Similarly, on the reconstruction, this is the second group of the Bond Streets. They're still relocating utility services. With the rain and stuff, we've kind of tossed around a few dates on when we're actually getting on Cottage Hillside. Those are going to be some of the first ones that we're going to get to. They've installed the storm drain on Wallace, and so that's another one that's going to get pretty quick. What we're finding out with a lot of our projects is availability of materials. We're a little delayed on some of the water service relocation, and so it's delayed some of this stuff. That's why you haven't seen press releases. But once we get into a street, which right now it's looking like Cottage is going to be the first one, we're going to issue a citywide press release, and we're still going to go through the door to door when we actually start getting milling the asphalt up and then repaving.
But we're not, it's not increasing our costs.
No, no cost, it's just timing. We want to try to get this done in the good temperatures.
Right.
And of course, before we go put asphalt down, we want to make sure everything below is good. Westminster is the remaining portion of those Bond dollars, and we're still in the preliminary design phase. We're looking to possibly bid that in September and get on the paving schedule, hopefully pretty soon. A few more, kind of staying on the Bond dollars, the take it easy. And take it easy, lowest street drainage improvements, that was the other part of the Bond. We're wrapping up design with Hewitt. We've got the text out of confirmation that we needed, so we're looking to release those bids here in the next couple of weeks.
What kind of confirmation? Are they paying?
That's as good as you're going to get from text dot saying that basically our plans and their plans match up to where we're not going to have any issues. What we don't want to do is go build a lower section at take it easy and then have a lower flow line.
So you don't have any assurances as to what they'll put in to the project?
No, so anything within their right of way on 27 is outside of our project and specific to theirs.
So they're paying for it as well as installing it?
Yes, they're doing the design and construction. They're doing that in text dot scope, so they're going to, they've already got the contract engineered done, and they're wrapping up all their approvals on their, for the design. The construction may not occur till 22, 23 time. We haven't got a finite date on that. So once we get more, you know, of a better assurance on the text dot work, then we'll get Hewitt to finish the design for the upstreet portion along Lewis Street. I know we've had several residences that.
Another year.
In reality, we're really, right, we're not much further than we were.
Well, this bottom section, you're going to notice an improvement. I can't remember the residents that we've talked to over there, but a lot of theirs is, you know, pretty much any storm because it's just a lot of pounding. This is going to get stuff on the bottom end through the bigger events that's still not going to fully improve that until we do the northern portion.
So we should actually see some work happening.
Hopefully, October, November. We'll see how bids come in and, you know, all the time. Yes, for the lower portions, that'll be 27 down to Guadalupe.
You know, if I tell them that and it doesn't happen, I'm going to be hard and feathered.
Yes, it's. You know, that's our, our hope is to mitigate some of those small events where they do happen.
Okay, all right.
Judy wants your card.
Okay.
The clock tower elevator, I don't know if anybody has seen it. The enclosure is done. We just put some last America to try to help the tower itself waterproofing. We are still, the way TDLR works, you have to have a 30-day wait time. Once you're done with the construction, before they come out and inspect the elevator cab itself. We're trying to push that, we're looking at, hopefully next week, to get somebody out here. It was supposed to be last week, that got canceled for some unknown reason. So we're trying to push them to get a little bit earlier. You know, we're still well within the 30-day timeframe, so they're kind of giving us a favor. But we're hoping by the end of this month that that elevator is fully operational and that it does not get shut down again. Just kind of hit on the library campus. We have the stair replacement. We had a pre-bid this morning. We're actually in your packet, you'll see July, we're going to postpone that a little bit. We're hearing a lot of roamlings that they, you know, they can't get to it for a couple of months, so they don't want to bid. We want, you know, we want good bids, we don't want to get, you know, bad bids or no bids, so we have to redo this thing. And so we're going to give them a little more time, so that'll be August.
Which one is this?
That's the stair replacement, it's number 12.
12, okay, okay.
Sorry, I was forgetting numbers, I'm going off the names. So instead of July, we're going to look at opening in August on that one. Similarly, what 13, the HVAC and lighting, that's out on the streets right now. We were planning, we were planning for that one originally to be a longer duration. So that one, I believe, is on the 24th of August meeting on your agenda. We'll see once a pre-bid comes in how contractor receives on information. And then somewhat related to library campus, the light, the island, number 25, I'm going to skip down on that one because it's the same campus. Currently advertising, we'll get bids at the end of this month, and that goes on the August 10th meeting. That's the partnership with the lighting corporation. We're going to split this up into phases because there's a little bit of K-Pup coordination plus the elevated cost. We want to make sure you get a good portion of the island lift for the holiday season. Parks will work intermediate with the contractor during that time to get the lights up so we're not delayed. Just, you know, water wastewater master plan, we were able to, during the May events, rain events, we were able to get the flow monitors in. You know, they have since removed those, and so we're working with a consultant. We should see the first round of data probably within the next month or two. So that's, it's not anything, I mean, that's a year-long process, but that's just a quick update. Yes, we did capture some data during all that rain. And then the last thing I really have is, before questions, is the number 19, the Blue Five Thirty Four Ellenberger well. We had to make some modifications. Again, the industry right now is not in any favor to us. So we're working with the contractors, doing some modifications, that we're going to start grading the site next week. So that one, we hope to have operational within about 30 or 45 days. They're doing us a favor changing stuff, and we're doing them a little favor to try to help navigate this economy the way it is. That's all I really had to highlight. If you have any questions, just let me.
Yes, on the number seven, Jefferson Street and striping, that's Jefferson Street, what area?
So that will go from Sidney Baker to Lemos. You know, coupled with HEB construction and the stuff that we've done in-house around pine plow for the cuts. You know, we want to make sure that everything's job, we just started sealed that last year. You know, HEB went from Daily Times to the Hayes intersection, and then we're going to do some more work to Lemos, have that whole street looking brand new. Let's go ahead and stripe it the way, you know, it looks brand new, we're going to add new striping. We're also going to accommodate the old striping that was behind the old HEB. And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, coming out right there by the barbecue place. There's a lot of issues with the existing striping because people are essentially parking in the driveway. It's a marked spot, but that's soon going to get covered.
So you're talking about like the, where the sightline hazards are?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, because that's what they're doing, is, you know, that was the old back of the building.
Right, when they were here.
So they're just parking in those spots, not realizing that they're parking right there in the driveway.
Okay, so will there, will or not be parking?
There will still be parking. It's just going to be, you know, further away from the driveway so you can actually have the sightline.
Yeah, yeah, well, coming out of there is difficult. And, and the way it is, you essentially give up part of Jefferson Street because you're crossing the center line in order to go through there, so.
So we're going to move those parked cars away with us.
By the way, I should have been more specific. I've talked several times about the need for speed control on Shriner. I was looking at from Pascal to Town Creek, but I know we've just installed some speed control radar apparatus on the other side. But anyway, the, my deal is that part of Shriner, so many kids in there, that's a neighborhood, and it just gets dangerous. Okay, we have, we have looked forever at the Aquatics Center feasibility study. I mean, we went to, went to over to the Deeter Center and spent an evening dreaming and talking.
And then COVID happened. Do you want to give an update? I don't know if we really have anything on that one.
Yes, the aquatics feasibility study, where we left off on that one was right at the tail end. All we really need to do is have the final public meeting to notify the public what the findings were. We did receive the study, we do know what the costs are and the condition of the facility. And we plan to incorporate that into our parks master plan update with our Seaman Park Mini Master Plan, which we'll be doing this summer. So we'll be calling a special meeting of the Parks Board and doing a public input, not a public input, but a meeting, a public meeting to inform the public.
Before the Parks Board, you think when?
Likely in August is what we're planning for.
Okay, all right, good, thank you. Anybody counsel, anybody else?
No, I was just wondering, with Shriner Street, I'm like the mayor, I was all excited when I looked at it, I thought, ah, we've got those up. And then it wasn't where I had anticipated it being and where I really feel that it needs to be. Can we put that on a look at soon schedule and continue that on down?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. We've talked about within the budget process, you know, we've got, we are continuing to roll out those radar speed signage elements throughout town. We put them up on Pascal Street in fact, and on Tybee Street and other areas. And so we continue to kind of roll those out as budgets allow for within our streets budgeting process. But yeah, absolutely, if there's a particular interest in having those west of Pascal on Shriner, we can certainly look at that. See what options that we have.
Yeah.
And then let me just say, I think in part, there's an obligation there. Those residents didn't ask to have a three-street, make Shriner a three, a through-street when the lower, you know, low water crossing was put in. Before then, Shriner went Town Creek. Same way, they didn't ask for Pascal to be a through-street. So I think we've got an obligation to help make those as safe as possible.
Yeah, and do it during the summer so that everybody's in the, they're in the habit of a reduced speed before school starts because there are a lot of children that are walking home both from Starkey and then the opposite way from BT Wilson.
And if you recall, in the second group of reconstruction streets, we've got the Barnett and McFarland, or West Barnett and McFarland, the larger shared use sidewalks. Hopefully, that kind of navigates them. But we're also, if you look at number eight, we have the dual community plan to provide that a little bit safer corridor through strapping, the bike lane and the crosswalks. So, you know, that's, that's going to, you know, hopefully handle the Pascal. We'll do the same thing with Shriner, we'll give the streets.
Yeah, it's good to have them on Pascal, I mean, they're very definitely there, thank you.
Billy, any other word? All right, thank you very much. Let's look at the capital assets, long-range outlook.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, community council. So our intention is to give you a broad overview of our capital asset fund and replacement forecast that we've developed over the past few months. And so to start off, I'd like first to talk to you about our process. As you can see here on this one, this is a 30,000-foot view of the process itself. But essentially, what we're trying to do is give you an idea that the garage is the starting point of the asset replacement. And we use our iWork database to assess the potential equipment that would be replaced. The database provides a replacement schedule based on fleet replacement rating that consists of the age, the activity, the usage, the cost, and condition. The equipment that has a score greater than 25 will be flagged by the database. And then the garage will then begin to bring in those vehicles, those pieces of equipment, to do an assessment. Because we want to make sure that we evaluate those and think of it more of like when you go to the oil, get your oil changed, a 26-point check. That's essentially what we're doing, we're evaluating to see if it's usability. And from that process, once we've identified those pieces of equipment that we find that are in critical condition, we then use that information and the requests from the departments, because we reach out to the departments and tell them, hey, here's the vehicles or here's the piece of equipment that we've identified, what are your needs? Because sometimes they have a better understanding of what their vehicles are or their equipment needs are. And so then we'll take those vehicles or those pieces of equipment as well into consideration and then develop a final list. And then from that list, we sit down with finance department, we review them, and then it goes to the city manager's office, and then we review them again. And so ultimately, we come out to a final list overall. So the iWork man, the iWork system is the database that we use, and it helps us monitor the fuel costs, the maintenance costs, the outsourcing costs as well of any additional equipment. Excuse me. And so there's another process which departments, I'm sorry, there's another process by which equipment can be purchased, and that is when the departments have savings or funding that allows them to purchase equipment that is over $5,000. This is generally used to replace equipment on an emergency basis. The city continues to refine the capital asset tracking and replacement process.
Is that built into the budget, or is that?
It's a lot of times it's funds like at the end of the year or during the middle of the year, they're seeing, I have X amount of dollar savings, and I can then purchase that, that piece of equipment. This slide here gives you an overall that's based on the iWork database. It's currently, we have 365 pieces of equipment that are being tracked, and the average age of that equipment is 11 years old. We're working hard to revise and consolidate and reconcile our database with the departments and the capital asset list managed by, through finance. So we're trying to consolidate that because there's a lot more pieces of equipment that don't necessarily touch the garage immediately until later down on the road. So like in those, that example I gave you right now, when they purchase something, a lot of times those pieces of equipment or vehicles go straight to the departments. And I'm not talking about like trucks or vans or vehicles, I'm talking about like ATVs or a mower or something like that. Then we just generally don't see them at the garage until there's a malfunction, and then they go into our iWork system. So we're trying to reconsolidate all that so that we have everything in the system as well. But as of now, we have about 365 pieces of equipment in the iWork system itself. To further break down the information, we have separated the data by fund. As you can see, the general fund has 280 pieces of equipment that on average is 10 years old. The water fund has 85 pieces of equipment and on average is 14 years old. The oldest piece of equipment that exists in the general fund is a generator that appears to be purchased in 1982. The water department, in the water department, there are two pieces of equipment that are aged 41 years old, and those are generators as well. Now, those aren't the big generators, but those are handheld generators that they can move around wherever they need to. These graphs detail the department-level summary of equipment. Public Works has the most equipment with 142 pieces, and the golf, on average, has the highest average of 14-years-aged equipment.
Does that not come down with, are rentals included in their leases? No leases included in that, okay, gotcha.
Those leases are not included in this account or this calculation. This graph details the type of equipment that we have within the city. Our equipment ranges from trucks, trailers, generators, mowers, graders, to name a few. So you can see there's a lot of pieces of equipment that we have in the city. And our generators, on average, are oldest pieces of equipment. During the recent extreme storm event in February, we had several generator issues that required staff to attend for various mechanical issues. The great thing about that is the staff at the garage was able to go out and address those and get those generators quickly running up again. But there were some generators that ultimately, they were struggling to keep up. And then staff is currently evaluating various hazard mitigation grants, opportunities to replace some of our older generators, and add new generators to existing critical facilities that may not have them. Through the iWork system, the city has become more sophisticated in its ability to forecast future capital assets, asset needs in the future years. This slide breaks down the asset replacements within the general fund only over the next five fiscal years. The current database of the capital assets depreciates at a book value of over about $900,000 per year annually. The city works hard to prolong the life of the capital assets well beyond depreciated book value, but this gives an indication as to the aging equipment and future identified needs. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so based on these numbers, is this what we, is this what we were wanting to transfer this amount? Are we doing this all on a transfer basis at the end of the year?
Yeah, so we'll get into that a little bit later and show you some of the historical data on there. But, but yeah, I think this gives you an idea of the level, the depreciation of the assets and the needs that are out there that we're forecasting going forward. And so, you know, we've got to match that up, obviously, right? So I mean, if you looked at all of this rolling stock and all of these assets as a building, for instance, that building is depreciating, right?
So we're basing budget on this information?
Absolutely forecasting budget going forward, that there's going to be needs out there that have to be funded, either through year-end transfers or through, you know, an actual proactive budgeted amount every year.
Have a combination of those things within the budget?
Correct.
I mean, I guess the, the asset transfer is just whatever.
Yeah, you don't know, you don't know for sure, year to year.
We need to get some different numbers in the budget as well.
That's correct.
Okay, so we do that.
Proactively budgeting the capital assets.
Yep, okay.
Well, and is the one for fiscal year 2022, is that still a forecast, or is that pretty much what you're going to be asking for us for the next budget?
Unless something changes, that's pretty much what we're going to be asking. But again, once we review it with you, something might change between then and now. This slide right here is, as you may recall, the city somewhat recently began to utilize the enterprise lease program to acquire vehicles rather than solely purchasing equipment. When we first started the program, the city had identified 72 vehicles that might be eligible for lease. However, that list has now expanded to include some police and fire vehicles into the program. And the average number of vehicles is going to be 121 vehicles. And the average years for those vehicles is going to be about seven years old. Currently, the city has eight vehicles that have been leased in our fleet and are located in the garage, Parks Department, Public Works, and Police Department. There are four additional leased vehicles that are in order. Two are police vehicles and two are trucks. There are nine leased vehicles proposed for the fiscal year 22 budget, which the requests are from the Parks Department, Fire Department, and Public Works. So in the end, we'll have total of 21 leased vehicles at this point in time, if, at the end of fiscal year 22, if everything goes well.
And this is that continuing to, to monitor the process and how it's?
Yes. And so far, the biggest feedback that we've gotten is everybody likes those vehicles, they're brand new, and it gives us an ability to make sure that our vehicles are safe. The maintenance on those vehicles, I mean, we don't put a lot of miles on these vehicles, so the maintenance is very low. But even the maintenance that we have done on them, we've been taking them to like the dealership, and they get serviced there, which gives us the ability to do other maintenance on other vehicles that come to the garage itself. But the advantage of the lease programs, as you'll see up there, is improved safety. You know, currently, 36% of our current vehicles in the fleet are more than 10 years old. Zero vehicles now predate airbag standardization, so we've been trying to remove those, eliminating those vehicles. We have 16 vehicles that still predate anti-lock brake stabilization, and we have 43 vehicles that still predate electronic stability control standardization. The, the ability of having leased vehicles is that it allows us to really accelerate the replacement of the age vehicles because we're able to buy more with our funding, or in this case, lease more of the vehicles with more funding. And then one additional benefit of the lease program is that the city continues to own those leased vehicles after we've paid them off. So it's not like a lease program that you normally see, like if you were going out to buy a vehicle on your own. It's not in that, that's, it's not in that same scenario because you're not, we don't have to turn them back over to the company. They stay our vehicles. We own the, the asset and we own the residual of that vehicle as well. So one of the things that we are trying is this year alone, is that we're taking the garage vehicle, the one that we actually leased last year, because Enterprise came back and said, that particular vehicle, we may be able to get $6,000 to $10,000 more than what you paid for selling it on the market. And then we can take those funds and reuse them back into purchasing another vehicle and lower that cost that way. So that's kind of what we're trying to see if that's going to really pan out, but.
Guillermo, okay, we've got 121 vehicles identified as potential, and we're looking at 2021 now. The average age is seven years. In the next two or three years, are we looking at really ramping up the leasing?
I think so. I think that's a great opportunity for us to really leverage our dollars and get much newer equipment, safer equipment for our staff across the board.
We'll show you some graphs that show kind of the trajectory of both purchases as well as leasing in some of these other graphs.
Which is this next slide that you see here. And so this slide gives you an insight in, on the amount of forecasted lease equipment costs and on annual basis, cost of equipment purchases anticipated during those fiscal years. Staff currently anticipates that if you look at it across the board, roughly about $200,000, give or take, is about what we would need to maintain the lease, the leases for the general fund. And, and part of our, our analysis too is that those vehicles that we're keeping from the lease program is also to try to keep them for another additional five years. And so it just depends on the vehicle itself and how much mileage, how much usage, and then also taking into consideration the market. So right now, it's a hot market for any used vehicle because a lot of the newer vehicles aren't getting put out. I mean, if you walk, if you drive by the Ford or some of the other dealerships, they don't have a lot of stock. And so a lot of the, the used vehicles is what they're looking for. And even us right now, a lot of the delays on some of the vehicles that we're waiting for is because they don't have chips. You know, the vehicles are there, it's just, they've been built, there's just no chips for them. So there's a higher demand. So it just depends on the market itself when we would potentially resell some of these vehicles.
So do you have a number in mind that is a good number to, to keep a vehicle?
Ideally, I would probably keep a vehicle by anywhere from three to five years. And it just depends, because at a certain point in time, if, all the studies have shown that I've seen, it's about that fifth, about a fifth-year mark where you get to the point where your depreciation, the cost of the equipment, and then the maintenance costs start to cross. And so there comes a point in time where you're paying more to maintain the vehicle than it's actually worth.
So again, remember, it depends on the asset as well. You know, if we're talking about a fire truck, that's a lot different than a police patrol vehicle, right? So there's a whole asset class that, you know, we've got, and that's really the benefit of the iWork system, is that the garage is very, they're able to maintain a database of when those repairs really start ramping up, and we can really start seeing the trajectory on the lifespan and forecasting, okay, it's getting, a vehicle may be not worth keeping because we're having to spend so much labor in maintaining it.
Okay, and you say that once, once you've paid off the lease, you own the vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a payout?
No.
At the end of your lease?
No, there's no balloon payout at the end of the lease. The way we structure it, now, there is that option with Enterprise, but we've structured it where everything, we don't have that payout. And so this graph right here is the water fund. One too far back on my slides. So this, this gives you an indication of the water fund itself and the replacement over the next five years. You can see, the water fund is generally a little bit more stable than the general fund. But overall, when you look at the lease versus the purchases, you get a general sense of what that cost is going to be.
Why is there that jump in 23? What are we looking at replacing?
So a lot of those are, a lot of the bigger equipment that they have, a lot of it's generators, a lot of it is, I have to go back and look at the actual. I have to go back and look at the actual list, but you're, you're looking at generators, mowers, and some other pieces of equipment that I just can't remember at this time. But I can get you that information if you'd like to see.
No, I just wondered if there was something big, like a single big purchase item.
Not, not at this point. It's actually in the general fund where we're looking at some pavers for the streets department. So that's where you see some of the bigger purchases.
Water funds, you know, if you're looking at the scale on water fund, remember that's a lot different than what the scale that you're looking at from general fund.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even, even one smaller vehicle can kind of skew the way that looks.
What was, what were those numbers on the side there? Like once it was in the hundred thousands?
Right around eighty thousand.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you.
So this next couple of slides, I'm going to turn it over to Trina to kind of talk to you a bit more in detail.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here to discuss the history of the asset replacement. We can start with the general fund. So the last five years, two thousand seventeen, we had a beginning fund balance of a hundred thirteen thousand. This kind of show the transfers in, basically the leftover fund balance that we are able to transfer into, to use into the assets and replacing those for the, the fiscal year. So we transferred in one point seven million in two thousand seventeen. Then we went back and paid out five hundred ninety thousand. So that left us the ending fund balance of around one point two million. We start the new year in two thousand eighteen with that fund balance. And we transferred in two point two million and that was leftover general fund money and some money in the capital projects fund that did not get utilized. It was probably transferred from general fund originally, then we went back because we needed it. So we spent, you know, seven hundred thousand that year and ended with a two point eight balance. And it just continues to roll. You can see our transfers in each year, two hundred thousand in two thousand nineteen. And we expensed out one point two million. So brought in a little bit, spent a little bit more. Left us that fund balance of one point nine. In two thousand twenty, transferred in a decent amount, one point four and expensed out one point three to leave us two million. Well, we are now currently in fiscal year twenty-one with that beginning fund balance of two million. We have, we're looking at budgeted numbers for this year and what we've already expensed out. So that's going to leave us at one point one. But if you go back to Guillermo's slide eight and what we already anticipated and proposed in the general fund asset.
Can I ask you a question? Are you saying that we don't have anything to transfer this year?
So, yeah, we don't know until year end.
Until year end.
Right, so we have three months left.
But realistically, will we have, likely have some transfer?
Yeah.
So this is not what we're expecting?
Absolutely, yeah. We're absolutely anticipating a transfer. We just don't know what that number is yet. We've got to see where final sales tax numbers fall through and all those other pieces.
That's what I was hoping you'd say.
Do we have a ballpark number?
I don't know that we have a ballpark at this point to, to release, but again, it, it, it's going to be, could become more clear here over the next couple of months.
So in the proposed general asset fund, we had, we had some ask of around one point one. And that's our current balance. So if we were to get all our ask in fiscal year twenty-two, that would put us down to a zero balance there. So we have nothing to roll forward after that. And the handouts that Julie gave you, the two word documents, you can see those expenses for each of those years if you want. We're curious as to see what those expenditures went to. We pick up mostly just the vehicles and the machinery, tools and equipment, which are the bigger price items. Go on to.
Can I ask a question? I know, I know in twenty seventeen that this model didn't exist as it does now. So do we have a better indicator? So what you said you do now is you look at what's been flagged. You take that, talk to the departments and then they compare that with what they're saying their needs are, rather than just going out and saying, what do you need? What do you think you need? Is that where we are now?
Yeah, and that's exactly right. So we visit with the departments and we, and we give them a list of, these are the vehicles that we think are, are on to, to be reviewed or to be replaced. They give us their list of, their wish list of what they would like to see. And then we compare those vehicles to our list and then we bring in the additional ones that are on their list. Because a lot of times we're going off of the iWork system and so it may be a vehicle to.
Better forecasting now probably than what we.
We're trying to get there. We're trying to get there to, we have a much better forecast on what vehicles, what pieces of equipment that we need to replace all the time.
And it's a blend, right? And we have to have an operational conversation as well because there may be operational components that are leading to that vehicle lifespan and, and the different maintenance techniques that are needed for it. And so it's this blend of the iWork's history and that sophistication.
Gives us a little bit more ability to look long-term budget-wise.
It gives us a little bit more sophistication because we're looking at various criteria with the system. And then, of course, the department's asking for X. We review those pieces of equipment, assess them and may, maybe turn around and say, well, we can make that vehicle last another year, maybe two years. But this one definitely, we're going to, we're going to swap for one of the ones that we've identified and replace out because that's a lot more critical than the one we've identified.
And it's more holistic across the entire city system rather than department by department.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what people are going to be asking for.
Correct.
More or less, yep.
Trina, did you have anything more on, on this?
Not on general fund, sir. We have water, sewer.
Okay.
I do have a question on the water fund though. So the expenditures that are noted in, in this one right here are the ones that are in this presentation, correct?
Correct.
So I'm just curious, why don't the numbers add up though? I looked at the twenty seventeen expenditures totaled that up and it doesn't add to the same amount. I mean, it's close, but not exact.
Because this reflects your bigger categories, just the vehicles and machinery, tools and equipment. So there are a few little expenses out of there that aren't reflected on these handouts.
Okay, what are those expenditures like?
I have those on a different spreadsheet. I can slide those to you.
Sure, yeah, I'm just curious. This is my first time going through this. I'd like to see this. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you go back, I can't remember. It was one of these first slides, but there's about thirty different asset categories, everything from
Right.
generators, generators, compressors, forklifts, equipment, trailer, all the way down to grapple trenchers. So it's, it's a full spectrum of, and even servers are in fact in there. Pretty much anything over five thousand dollars is going to get captured within that capital asset category.
Right, okay.
So on water and sewer, you can pretty much see the same structure here. And as I stated before, the water asset replacement is, you know, it's pretty self-sufficient, but the whole balance is a lot less than the general fund. So this estimated fiscal year, we're looking at a hundred nine, a hundred eighty-nine thousand ending. And we have some projections possibly for the next fiscal year, but I feel like those should be, be able to be covered with what we have.
Again, this is one that, you know, it's, it's very cyclical, committing on water, especially during those final months of our budget year. In that August, July, August, September timeframe and really what the, the water demands end up being during our very hot months. And so that very much is an indicator of where we end up on water fund and, and how much we're actually able to, to transfer in at year end. So very hard to forecast right now in the middle of July.
It's very cool and rainy.
As accurate as the weatherman is.
Any questions?
It's also Trina's birthday today, by the way.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Trina.
So the last slide is basically a summary, summary of the various conclusions. So the annual depreciation of capital assets does not match the historical budget annual funding levels. The lease program creates a higher fixed but more predictable annual forecasted replacement cost. The city typically supplements capital asset fund through end of year transfers from expenditures, as we talked about earlier. And the city will look to, will need to look at more consistent and higher levels of annual funding for capital assets over the long term. Any additional questions or concerns?
So again, both these items today, we brought to you, not because we were looking for a ton of feedback necessarily, just wanted to give you these as kind of a precursor to obviously the proposed budget, which will be submitted to you all at the end of the month. But also in advance of your budget workshop that's scheduled for next week. Because both of these are some of the auxiliary funds outside of general fund. And so it just gives you some things to kind of chew on as we have some of those conversations next week on those additional funds.
So basically, y'all are setting up, you're giving us some tools for more long-term stability in our assets and what we need to be able to designate for funding.
Correct.
Rather than maybe relying less on asset replacement and more on general fund and getting those numbers in. Is that what we want it turned for?
Yeah, we, we just want council to know long-term what some of those forecasts are for assets, right? So, you know, no different than streets, right? So for many, many decades, you know, the community neglected streets and street funding and we've had to play catch-up on that, right? And so what we don't want to do is have other asset categories have that same kind of deferred maintenance and then the city gets into a position where they're having to dedicate a tremendous amount of resource all at one time to play catch-up.
Arguably, we're heading in that direction with the, with the aging of our fleet and our vehicles and our assets.
Correct.
But we are able to be proactive at this point and head that off if we can follow this model.
Absolutely, and I, I think you said it best. Trying to be more proactive than reactive.
Correct.
That's good.
You wouldn't consider any of our buildings, like City Hall, for example, an asset, right? This, the funds in this, would they be used? If something were to, any type of replacement need to happen for City Hall? I, I said you wouldn't.
Buildings are considered part of our overall asset package.
Okay.
It's not when we're looking at this hard replacement schedule. Looking at more, more short-term kind of lifespan here on, on your most present.
Like short-term replacements?
Right, he's looking at equipment, vehicles, things that we're probably going to have to replace in that five to fifteen-year timeframe.
Right.
Not so much as like, you know, a building that has a much longer lifespan. And of course, each building's a little bit different on depreciation wise.
And I think buildings you would see in the presentation that Kyle showed you earlier. So anything that would be in, in for a building would be in that report.
But you're accurate in your assessment that, you know, we don't depreciate the buildings in the same way. We don't, we're, we're not pre-saving at the, at a depreciation level for buildings either, right? And so that's why buildings do require large capital programs to, when, when their life cycle has ended.
Is that something we're also looking at doing?
It certainly could be. If the council's interested in that, but again, that's, we're going to require a, a funding level that's different in a cash funding type scenario that's different than what has historically ever been done in Kerrville.
Guillermo, I've got a question. I drive a, a twenty-ten Toyota Tacoma pickup. Could I lease that to the city and get me something else?
No.
No.
I'd turn around, better off for you selling it right now on the open market.
Oh, that, that may be true.
Bang for your buck.
It might be quite, quite a lot newer than some of these vehicles that were represented.
Well, that's true too, yeah, yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Guillermo.
All right.
I just want to finish with one more thing. I, I think it would be beneficial if the city were to look at something like that for our buildings. And then secondly, is there any reason why we can't have this information also provided in our agenda packet so we can look at it beforehand as well and put it on, online on our website?
Yeah, some of these materials are, are being worked on, you know, up until basically today. We were working through a few of these drafts and so we do try to get them out, you know, in advance when we can. But it, summer's a very busy season for us with budget, as you know. So we were working pretty hard to get these out to you guys, given the depth of these conversations.
Okay.
Understand the comments.
Okay, council. Do you hear a motion for us to go into executive session? Five five one dot oh seven one, five five one dot oh seven two, five five one dot oh eight seven.
Yeah, I'll move that we go into executive session under those sections. And with the following staff being the city manager, the city attorney and others as council deans necessary to call in when necessary.
All right. Okay, all in favor, if you'd let it be in the library.
I'll second that.
Yeah, second, second, thank you. Second, all in favor, let it be turned around by the raised hand. Thank you. First, there were no items of, of action coming out of the executive session for the council tonight. And so, and that executive session is now adjourned.